Our Board President, John Anderson, will be conducting the meeting this evening. So if we can, please all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Boarder Business is the approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
Uh, Mike, I would like to ask that check number 330937...
Repeat that one more time, please.
330937 to Hodgson-Louisey for $4,027.50 be voted on separately.
Very good, so we voted on that separately. There's no reason that, why would we vote separately from the rest of the bills?
Um, yes, I do not believe that we have been fairly represented and I feel that by this law firm, and I feel that, um, we talked about not using them, but we continue to use them, just as we continue to use FGM. And, um, we attempted, I, I, we interviewed for architects and who were under depression, they were going to work on the school. We need to, but we need to...
This check number is about the...
Payment to Hodgson-Louisey. And I don't think we're getting accurate representation by this law firm, so I don't, I, I also am aware that in another school, they defrauded the taxpayers.
Okay, well, we're talking about...
I'm talking about Hodgson-Louisey.
Well, we're talking with us. You did have a chance to review the bills, were there any questions or problems with the billing statements?
I did not review the bills personally. I mean, I looked at them on our iPad, but I did not look at them in person.
Any other changes to the agenda, Ryan? No? Thank you. Uh, recognitions. I'm sorry.
Do we need to vote on that?
Jumped ahead of myself. So, uh, those are the changes for the separation of check, uh, 330937.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Very good. That was a motion by Mr. Beyond and second by Mr. Drake. Roll call.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyond?
Yes.
And Mr. Munda?
Yes.
I have five yes, motion carries.
Very good. Now I can move on to the recognitions.
We have a blue dollar here this evening that we're very proud of. So I'm going to ask Mr. Oze and Coach Don if they'd like to say a few words about this line of memory.
Good evening. It's a great honor to recognize one of our two-year-olds with outstanding performance at State Track Meet about over a month ago. And have our head of track coach, Coach Brian Dunn, to share what was accomplished. So, Coach Dunn?
Good evening. I'd just like to say a few words about Alvin here. Alvin is first and foremost a great person and an excellent example of sportsmanship and leadership. She's offering constant encouragement to her teammates as well as support and encouragement to members of other teams, which is, I think, to be highly commended. As expected, Alvin is an incredibly hardworking competitor. When it comes time to compete, she's focused, she's determined to perform, she's always demanding the best out of herself. This season, Alvin threw a career best 40-foot nine in shot put and 123 feet 10 in discus. She secured the team countless points along the way and also earned her a team MVP for the season. The sectional meet, Alvin stepped up, qualified for state in both shot put and discus. She went on to qualify for finals in shot put at the state meet with a putt of 38 feet 11 inches while narrowly missing finals in discus. And with that, she went on to place 11th in the finals of shot put at state meet. It's been an absolute pleasure having Alvin on the team these past three years. I truly look forward to watching her finish her career at Warren next season. So congratulations and a great season, Alvin.
You're supposed to tell that. Oh, I'm sorry.
Congratulations. Coach, congratulations.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I can try, I can, I'll...
Oh, your phone's not working. You want me to do another one?
There's a picture up between the room.
For love, okay?
No. Coach then.
Where are we going, guys?
Where Carol wants you. Carol's the picture taker. Great idea. You get between the two boys. The two guys. Alrighty.
This might be my best picture ever. Thank you.
What was the, uh, what was the wing? What was the first place foot?
Forty-five, twenty-four.
Oh, my gosh. Is she still throwing?
Yeah, sure, sure.
I know you won.
Um, she is still throwing a USA TF for the summer to, you know, get ready. So we're on our way to, uh, the state and now we're on our way to regionals in Muncie, Indiana. Hope to go to California for, um, that is, uh, the nationals.
Yeah, nationals to California, is that right?
And she took second. She took, yeah, so...
In the July.
Oh, wow.
That's terrific.
Just getting ready for the next season.
That's great.
That's right.
Got our eyes on that school, right?
Right, oh, absolutely.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
All right, thank you.
Try to find some time to relax for yourself.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. So moving right along, we have the reception of visitors. I didn't see anybody that signed in, but if there is anybody that would like to address the board and share some thoughts? Nobody, really?
No.
Aaron, Art?
Yeah?
Karen? Nope, they can count everybody in the house. Moving right along, John did not leave anything for me in the president's report. Jean, did everybody get back to about IIII?
They did. We sent in the registration and the closing application. Um, they did receive it. Sorry, we, we, our, the Mary Ann, they just went, we had applied. I haven't received the paper documents in the mail yet, but we did get an email.
Can I ask Campbell, do you go on?
Eleven.
All the board members are going to the shakes of meat.
My iPad problem on, except because everyone wanted it.
I'm not sure if this one legislator will show up for the conference.
Yeah.
No budget, but they're in the, they're in the area.
Yeah, they are, we'll see.
No, some of them are. Only some.
Uh, moving around long, committee reports.
I've included the minutes for the finance committee meeting on June 14th, 2016. Uh, we covered areas of the budget that hadn't been covered previously. Our first budget meeting was regarding the benefits, this covered all the other expenditure categories. Um, we talked about changes from the budget, kind of the budget that I presented initially and, um, talked about changes in general state aid incentive bill 231. Um, we also reviewed the five-year plan as that had changed and talked about targeted fund balance, cash balances, and, um, answered a number of questions from the board. It will be interesting, as a side note, with no budget passed, seems that our funding, federal funding may be held up.
Did you read the state superintendent's...
Yes, message. So, uh, we'll have one last budget meeting in August before we put out a public budget.
Any questions on it? Superintendent's report, Dr. Algrum.
Thanks, Mr. Munda. For, uh, we did have four board members, each of the building reports for attendance, enrollments and discipline for the month of May. Do we have a treasurer's report for the month of May, Carol?
Uh, yes. Uh, we have been, um, it's a very short narrative for May on the treasurer's report. Uh, we had a little glitch with Skyward that we've now got fixed. We'll spend the majority of time on that and see if we can get a treasurer's report out to you. Uh, the year looks very good and looks like we'll be on target for our planned whole balanced budget. So I think that's good news. And, uh, we're ramping up this week to 30th, the last day of our six-year years. We're making all our cash transfers, getting our last payrolls out, uh, so we have a very clean audit process. But, uh, I think, I think the year will turn out as mine, so I'm very happy about that. So, drop your fingers and keep working. Any questions about the treasurer's report?
Thanks, Carol. We do have a couple of other, uh, just general announcements. I had written to the board, uh, the graduation situation. We continued to process that for a long time about where we were at with that. We just made decisions relatively very soon, actually, because the Sears Center, obviously, it has availability for us. It was one of those weird things when they said they had the availability. We don't know if that was at that minute in time good or bad for us because it obviously allowed us another option, but, um, it also made us realize that we processed everything. There were two things that really got in our way about having it on campus. One was parking. That wasn't the largest of worries. It was a worry of ours, right? That we do, think about a thousand, a thousand cars, many of those being grandparents and handicapped, we put all those people in, uh, than just the general crowd. But we thought maybe if we had the police department meet with us, we thought maybe we could be able to overcome most of that, it wouldn't be great, but, uh, we thought we'd be able to overcome most of that. The piece that we really don't have a good answer for though, in general, and not that we could never do it, but, uh, the more we talked about splitting the ceremony in half and what that would do to, first off, the amount of time it would take us to do that just with the amount of students in each ceremony and clearing out one facility in a reasonable amount of time to even get the other group in, what that might be in the families who are, have connections to both families and the community as a whole, it just didn't feel right. The risk was really great there, um, and we didn't have an answer for it. So that ultimately is what made us go back to the Sears Center instead of a site visit there on July 7th. We're pretty confident about what they do there, uh, meaning that we know that it won't be, uh, it is what it is, it'll, if we end up there, it'll be offsite and the good thing is tickets would be, not be an issue. We'll have more tickets than we've had in the past. Parking's not a problem there. Handicap accessibility is fine. They're used to having graduations of our size. And it was the week prior from where we had it on our calendar, but still the same weekend that we had this year, if you will. Um, so it's, so tend to be right now, they got us penciled in for the 21st of May, Sunday at 3:00. That's really the only opening they had left available for us. And we're going there on July 7th. If all goes well, we'll probably give them a deposit and, uh, get a signature on a piece of paper at that point in time to do that. There were just too many obstacles, the weather in and of itself, if we could be guaranteed great weather, that's one thing, right? But without that, we run the risk that it would be, as I tried to write to the board, run the risk that it would be a bad stressful day, if you will. And that's the last thing in the world we want to do to that day. We know the Sears Center will give us a good venue and a good opportunity to have a good ceremony, so. And it is for, uh, the other thing I tried to communicate was, the good thing was Northwestern did communicate back to us though that it is on their end right now anyway, still just for the two years that they're doing the renovation. So, uh, they still have every intention, as far as we know, of having us back if we want to be there in 19, uh, so it just, we needed to come up with a solution for 17 and 18. So unfortunately, it happened this year, but it is what it is. And the nice thing was the Sears Center, I'm glad we called right when we did and kind of got on their radar, so, uh, that's kind of where we're at with the Sears Center process. Questions on that?
I have a question. My question is, I, I had seen other schools that have used that and it said it's a flat fee for the whole facility. So does that also include like their, the skybox areas? So would we maybe have the ability to offer that to families that they could pay to have their family in a skybox to help us offset our cost on the, you know, the all-day rental fee?
So I don't, so the Sears Center, there's different kinds. I'm not sure about the actual skyboxes there, but I do know that there's, uh, what they call nests all through the facility that are all open during their ceremonies. Because the nice thing about it is it's a very open type venue and so you can pretty much perch wherever you want and there's spaces like that that I call them nests rather than skyboxes. There might be skyboxes above that that I'm not sure of, but I do know that there's different seating opportunities kind of back behind the regular, uh, regular venue seats. The seats are nicer, I mean, you know, nicer than what most of the seats are in Northwest. There's some other advantages to going to a setting like it, so we'll see when we're there exactly what includes gathering. But I'm, I know it at least includes those areas because when some of my kids graduated from there, we used them, right? It was very flexible and, you know, they were good, uh, it was a good venue to have a sale on. And on a Sunday, the traffic, it's easy to get in and out of there on a Sunday, so. So I appreciate your, uh, input and we were happy the last, actually what helped us a lot was when we had the last board meeting and we were wondering, oh, I wonder what a Sunday would be like, you know, just to make sure that the board was okay with it. And people have them on Sundays, but we hadn't asked that question, so we appreciate your support in that and actually is a nice, you know, really nice. And we also didn't, the other thing about having things inside was, we like the fact that after a ceremony, people like to hang out. They don't like to be in a rush. You know, I mean, they like to appreciate that time and if we had both ceremonies here, we were, I mean, we would have had, have almost been rude to get people out of here just to have enough time to get the next group in. The more we started talking about that, we were like, wait a second, we're, we're just trying to make something happen that maybe should, so.
Right. And we've had so many wonderful years with great weather, this would be the year that Mother Nature would give us warm like your old children.
That's an update on graduation. Uh, we also have a next, we, Mr. Anderson had actually asked for a note on the Zacharias Center. Because he asked for it, we'll postpone that to July, it's just a short report that we'll give in the superintendent's report, but because John at least introduced it, I want to make sure he's always at part of that discussion. Uh, we also have, we'll get to the board before we leave tonight on your way out. Yeah, we'll make sure on your way out tonight, we have a draft of what is our second semester, uh, second semester connections newsletter with highlights in there of the second semester of the school year. We'll send it out, uh, to our staff by the end of the week as well as make it available to, uh, whoever wants it electronically. So we have a draft for you at this point in time. If you look through it in the next day or so, uh, give us a call, uh, or an email to let us know if there's something in here and there. We're also using some of the information that's in that, uh, newsletter to go to the Keeping Posted newsletter, which is our intergovernmental cooperative newsletter that goes out in the summer. So as a reminder, we spent about $3,000 on that project collectively through that communication effort. And at least at this point in time, the things that we would obviously want to make sure that we capture in there are the recognition by the Washington Post and Newsweek, uh, our Teacher of the Year, uh, some, and obviously our centennial will be what we consider to be our highlight story for this summer to make sure that people are aware of our upcoming events. And, uh, FBLA is currently in Atlanta. They left, uh, this morning, Mr. Meyer, and the sponsors are, uh, down there right now with 47 or so students, so they're competing at the national level in Atlanta over the next couple of days. Reminder, any board members, if you are interested, on August 20th, we have the Beers Practice Event at Oak Plain, so if you're interested in tickets for families or friends, please just email me how many you think are the right amount and we'll make sure that, uh, Kim keeps some tickets aside for you. Uh, tomorrow, just as an update, tomorrow Carol and I are actually going over to Gertie Mills to meet with the Simon Group management just to review our lease and where we've been. Remember, we have one more year on our lease out there, so we want to get a head start on seeing what, what their initial feelings are on the lease, uh, to see if there's any immediate obstacles or red flags. Also, if you remember, the strategic plan, a review of our transition center is for the 17, I'm sorry, the 16, 17 school year. And so part of that is obviously space. So if there are any obstacles to that space, we want to know those sooner rather than later. So we thought we'd at least have an initial meeting just to kind of get a preliminary feel for whether they're even seeing that as a long-term option for now. Uh, and I think, I think that's all I have in the superintendent's report. So please have a reminder before you leave tonight, this will let us disregard this issue, a draft of the, uh, the newsletter.
Things happen, it's okay.
Thank you, Dr. Algrum. New business. Let's talk about the approval of the fuel bid for 17.
Uh, we went out for a joint bid with Woodland Fifth, District 50, which we've done for the last several years. We had eight bidders. The lowest responsible bidder for Warren was Conserve FS at a price of 15 cents per gallon, and this is delivery cost, that's what they bid on, uh, less a three dolla, uh, three cent rebate per ga, per gallon than that cost of delivery of 11 cents. That was 14 cents.
Was it 14 or 15?
Uh, it was 14.
Oh, okay.
14. 14 less three, so we're 11 cents, so we're going to recommend that the Board of Education award the fuel bid to Conserve FS. Any questions?
Carol? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, just our experience with all bids, right? Any concern, any surprises that might pop up? Did they miss something reading through the contract and the bid process? I know it's, they needed to come over, they needed to take a look at how the facility is, it's kind of an as-is facility, you don't have to come, there are 2,000 gallon tanks and it's X number of trips for them. They're not going to come back with any surprises and say, ooh, it's not 14, it really is 15?
No, we're really very fortunate because we've used Conserve in the past. They've done an excellent job. Uh, the tank, uh, we're, we've got a very set delivery schedule, so that really hasn't changed for years. So, uh, Conserve is very familiar with the situation and, uh, when we first looked at it, we wanted to, you know, take into, remember to take into account the rebate that we get from them, so.
Uh, Carol? Uh-huh. Is it feasible for us to put in a larger tank or, I mean, it seems like it would save us money, but I don't know how feasible it would be.
It's really, we have not really investigated it, but it would be a very expensive undertaking based on, on my knowledge of, uh...
So the payback would be pretty...
It would be a long period of time. We actually looked at a bulk ground source tank at one particular time, um, very expensive.
I was actually surprised that our tanks were underground. How long have they been underground?
They have not been underground as long as I would have imagined. I think it's probably been 20-some years, not, you'd think they'd been there forever, really, to be quite honest with you. And, um, no, it's...
And that tank doesn't get as much use as it used to get.
It still does because we're still filling our buses up there exclusively. So when we do a drop at Oak Plain, they're filling up, filling up at Oak Plain. So it's, it still gets the same amount of use. I wish they were a little more, maybe they're more, a little more fuel efficient, some of the newer ones. Not sure about that, but...
Not, not a conversation for tonight on bid, but somewhere in the facility plan in the next, let's just say 20 years.
Yes.
There needs to be a line item on there to get the tanks out and from and...
Yes.
...get that risk.
Right, and the, the, just so the board knows, those are, tanks are inspected every year. Tina has to get certified every year and so does, uh, Rich Wire, who's our fleet manager. So, uh, we will be doing some work on the pump here in the near future, about $6,000 worth. That's not verified, but, uh, I will put that on the list for consideration and we'll start getting some estimates of costs.
Probably won't happen in my term, the terms, if voters have to be back, but, uh, yeah, gotta get that tank out of there.
Yeah, it's not, uh, probably that environment we're from.
No other questions? Will we need a motion?
I move to approve the fuel bid for the FY17 school year to Conserve FS as presented.
Second.
Uh, motion by Campbell, second by Beyond, a roll call.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyond?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
And Mr. Munda?
Yes.
I have five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, next is the approval of the resolution of interest.
Uh, this resolution designates that interest in a fund remain as interest. If not, it reverts to principal. The nice thing about interest is you can transfer it between funds, which is why we really like to keep the flexibility of designating it as interest. So, um, this is a standard, uh, resolution that we do every, um... Any questions?
No questions, will we need a motion?
I move to approve the resolution of the Board of Education of Warren Township High School, District Number 121, Lake County, Illinois, designating interest in the education, operations, maintain and maintenance, debt service, transportation, capital projects and working cash funds.
Second.
Motion by Beyond, a second by Drake. Roll call.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyond?
Yes.
And Mr. Munda?
Yes.
I have five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Approval of the school treasurer for district funds, activity funds and treasurer's bond.
I'll let Dr. Algrum put it up there.
Annually, we identify a treasurer for the district. Beth Kellman identified as the treasurer and, uh, that's not, in my experiences, I know there's been discussion at this board level about how other districts may or may not operate, that's not unusual. The status that Carol has within the district is not an unusual one for me coming in, so just the district's that, and that's a familiar situation that the chief school business obviously would also be the treasurer for the district, so.
I just would like to say again what I've said since I've been a school board member, which goes back to 2009, um, when I, this issue came to me for the first time that year when I was on the Woodland School Board. It's not anything about the merit of the appointment. My position is that I think the statute is not in line with GAAP, which is generally accepted accounting principles, and that has been my position, um, during my entire tenure as a board member since 2009. It is again, it's not about the merits of the appointment with the person, it's about, uh, the fact that I think that the General Assembly needs to do... uh, the fact that I think that the General Assembly needs to do some rework on the statute. So, I just wanted to clarify again, what my position has been, has been consistent year after year after year. Um, it's not anything about the...
It's not personal, Carol.
Thank you for saying that.
I know means is it personal.
They just think it's a check and balance.
Absolutely, I understand.
Nothing else, sir, or I'll need a motion.
I move for Carol L. Rogers to continue as the appointed school treasurer for school district funds and as a school treasurer for the school activity funds. Further, I move to approve and accept the treasurer's bond for the treasurer of the district in an amount sufficient to meet Illinois School Code.
Second. Motion by Wallace, second by Drake, roll call.
Ms. Campbell?
No.
Mrs. Beyondi?
No.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
I have three yes and two no, motion carries.
Uh, the approval of the resolution authorizing accounting transfers.
Uh, this is against a motion for a resolution that we do every June. In your budget, we are required to transfer funds to our debt service funds for capital leases and debt certificates. So, an accounting transfer, uh, accomplishes that. Uh, you've, uh, I've included the amounts and what funds the, they will go to. So, it's budgeted, it's required by law, and we're executing the resolution to meet compliance.
Sounds like following the law. Correct?
Correct.
So, the motion.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing account transfers to debt service funds to implement state regulations.
Second.
Sorry, I couldn't get back to make the motion.
So, we had a motion by Campbell, second by Drake, roll call.
Mrs. Beyondi?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
I have five yes, motion carries.
Next is the approval of list, list of authorized depositories in accordance with the board policy.
In review, reviewing board policy four colon thirty, uh, we wanted to make sure that we got on an annual cycle with the board of listing the depositories and, uh, having you approve the list. Uh, we have wanted each one of the depositories to make sure that they meet the, the investment criteria of our policy, our safe funds, and meet the investment criteria of the state of Illinois. They all invest in, in, uh, the highest rated funds. Our funds are collateralized and are insured by FDIC, and, uh, these are currently the depositories that we use, uh, for the business of the district. Any questions that I can answer for the board?
None, need a motion, please. Move to approve the list of depositories in accordance with board policy four colon thirty.
Second.
Motion by Drake, second by Beyondi, roll call.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyondi?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
And Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
I have five yes, motion carries.
Very good. agenda, I am, I do, is the approval of the revised fiscal year seventeen staffing plan.
I do try to give a little update to the board on the detail behind this, just that there were two significant changes. One was we moved one peer professional who's in special education in our transition program at Almond, we'd like to move that position out to our transition center. And we also have a student who's in from a seed hall site into our transition center as well, and because that position is based on a specific student placement, if you will, and in theory, uh, if the student leaves for whatever reason, uh, we would close that position. I put that on the front page under, uh, an additional conditional position, so we can track that accordingly.
And need a motion.
I move to appro, to approve the revised FY seventeen staffing plan as presented.
Second. Motion by Beyondi, second by Drake, roll call.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyondi?
Yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
I have five yes, motion carries.
Next, we have the dismissal of educational support staff personnel for reasons other than a reduction in force. Questions? None, and can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the dismissal of Rebecca Johnson pursuant to the resolution, dismissal of educational support personnel for reasons other than the reduction in force as presented.
Second.
Motion by Wallace, second by Campbell, roll call.
Mrs. Beyondi?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
I have five yes, motion carries.
And next we have the approval of the hiring recommendations, Exhibit A in front of you, with the amendments, uh, three ten and three eleven for Nathan Baker and James Messina, the senior.
I move to approve Exhibit A hiring recommendation, numbers three oh two through three oh nine is posted in Exhibit A, and it, numbers three ten, Nathan Baker resignation, and three eleven, James Messina, a new hire.
Second. Very good. Motion by Beyondi, second by Drake, roll call.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyondi?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
I have five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of payment of the bills for six twenty-eight sixteen, and we are going to separate, uh, check number three three zero nine three seven. What was that amount?
Four thousand twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Four zero two seven point five.
So, can I have a motion for that, please? Nope. I'm going to make it. I'll move to approve, uh, payment of check number three three zero nine three seven, which I believe is to Hodges.
Yes.
Uh, in the amount of four thousand forty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Four thousand twenty-seven dollars and...
Four thousand twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Motion by...
Motion by Mundah's, and, uh, Drake was the second, roll call.
Ms. Campbell?
No.
Mrs. Beyondi?
No.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
And Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
I have three yes and two no, motion carries.
So, then we have the recommendation to pay the rest of the bills. Do we have a final count over there?
Uh, three million, six hundred and thirty thousand...
I'm sorry, somebody coughed.
Three million, six hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-three cents.
I move to approve the payment of the bills for six twenty-eight sixteen in the amount of three million, six hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy cents.
Seventy-three cents.
Seven, oh, seventy-three cents, I'm sorry.
Second. Motion by Beyondi, second by Mundah, roll call.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyondi?
Yes.
I have five yes, motion carries.
And the final item tonight is the approval of the regular meeting minutes and the executive session minutes for June fourteenth, twenty sixteen. Any questions? Can I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of the June fourteenth, twenty sixteen meeting.
Second. Motion by Beyondi, second by Drake, roll call.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyondi?
Yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
I have five yes, motion carries.
Um, I forgot there was a question, but...
Officials?
Yes. I'm sorry, I, it, it flew out of my brain, but I did ask a question about why we had so many, and sorry to prove, so it doesn't matter, but why we had so many, um, uh, sports officials being paid so late? Is there a problem internally with those?
Your benefit bills?
Yeah.
And let's, Mr. Beyondi did...
You did have some, some questions.
And what do, what do, what do the...
The sequence of, of bill paying is, uh, we play the first rounds, spring season starts mid-March, we play the first round on April fifteenth, they turn the bills in, then Carol to business office, and then the season ends, the last games usually are May twentieth and May twenty-fifth, and I give her all the, the next round of, of bills. Uh, so the business office process of them, so that, that's about what every school district really is at, because a lot of school districts have one board meeting a month, and then June is when they get them, mid-June, so we're just a little bit off only because, uh, this is the sheer number of getting them all processed and, you know, because there is a lot, you know, uh, spring is our most active season of using officials with, you know, softball and volleyball and baseball, um, track, they use a lot of officials, so, so really not late, it's about when we typically pay the, the spring, second hour.
I've noticed in the past we had that problem, but it's not a problem, I just didn't understand why so many are at the end after school has ended.
I mean, it's just the timing of when, you know, Carol gets the movie delivered that already, it doesn't make the May meeting, and, you know, with the sheer numbers, sometimes it, and it gets hard to get all the, you know, get it done for the first meeting and June.
And it actually, correct me if I'm wrong, Carol, but doesn't it save us money on checks? The number of issue, of checks issued, or does it not?
It always does when you issue less checks. Another issue that we have with officials on occasion is we have to have a W nine from them, and if they don't give us the W nine, it delays their payments. So, if you see somebody in particular is late, uh, we're probably waiting on a form W nine for them.
W nine or W four?
Uh, W nine is for vendors, so...
Oh, they're considered a vendor, okay.
They're considered a vendor, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so, sometimes it's, it's a compliance piece.
Okay, okay, thank you, I just was curious. And I'm sorry, I forgot to ask in the payment of the bills, but it did not affect the payment of the bills.
So, just need a moment, uh, to adjourn. Need to move again?
To adjourn the meeting.
Very good.
I second it.
Have to get the right... Very good. So, it's a motion by Drake, second by Beyondi, roll call.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyondi?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Mr. Drake? Are you okay?
And Mr. Mundah?
Oh, thank you.
Yes, please.
Thank you, I have five yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, everybody.
Enjoy your...
It's summer and I know you hate to come, but thank you so much.
Board members, thanks for your just length of time tonight, and as we get closer to the July meeting, if we think we can expedite that...
And I think Tom had, Tom had a good idea, that we go keep with our executive session time and bump the other one.
That's fine, that's a great idea. We just have to update our...
Make the public aware.
Right.
Yes, you go. All right, yeah, yep.